We're going to go ahead and begin shortly, and so we'll go ahead and start with our first item. Dr. Carlson.
Yeah, I think we need to adopt the agenda first.
Yes, can I adopt the agenda first? I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So it's going to be, my computer is locked up, so I apologize. No, I'm good. So, yes, motion and second. Can I have all in favor? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And opposed. All right, Ms. Berger. Doctor, thank you.
Agenda item 2.01, Continue School Improvement Plan. Dr. Berger.
Good evening. The purpose of the work session and this particular presentation today is to give the board an update on process as we work our way through the CSIP process and to ensure that the board's comfortable with where we are in process as we begin to progress towards what will ultimately be a presentation and a request of the board to approve the work. So really, today is less about product. You'll have a little bit of a glimpse at where we are in terms of current status and draft, but really, this is about articulating and communicating the process that we have gone through and to create opportunity for a redirect if there was any concern with regard to where we are at this point in time. Who's on the team when we think about our CSIP team? As you know, we put out a call for involvement in our engagement teams, CMFP and CSIP. What we ended up on the CSIP team is we have thirty-three parents, eight teachers, thirteen administrators, eight employees who are not teachers, three community members who do not have students in the schools, two students, and a board member with an alternate as needed. Within the CSIP team, we have all but three of our schools represented by one or multiple of these individuals, and those three schools are represented on one of the other teams. So we ensured that all of our schools were represented across the three stakeholder and engagement series teams, but for this particular team, we're real diverse in terms of representation across the district. So what is the product? What will we be bringing to you? I joked a little that I may not be getting my degree in graphic design, but it serves the purpose for understanding what's coming. If you think about the large, dark-colored boxes at the top, those will be large strategic goals. Our existing CSIP has four goals that guide the work, and so this was a three-to-five sort of range. Beneath that, we will have objectives that are SMART goal-written. Those will be driven by data. They will actually be measurable goals. Those will not be action steps. They will be measurable SMART goals that allow for us to measure quantitatively what kind of progress is being made. Those two roles will become board-approved CSIP items. And then, under each of those, we will have a Board of Information item that is the tactics or the strategies that help fulfill those SMART goals. What that allows for us to do is to be able to communicate to you the strategies and tactics that we intend to do to meet those goals, but it also creates the agility to move within those tactics and goals without needing to come back for formal board approval every time we want to change a strategy. So that is the recommended product as we move forward. So our process looks something like this. In September and October, the CSIP team developed three-to-five overarching strategic goals, which will share an initial glimpse at the draft of those so far. And then in November, the CSIP team would review the draft strategic goals and begin providing topics and focus areas that would become SMART goals and objectives. And then, those are handed over to District Administration to take a look at those topics, focus areas, and say, okay, let's take a look at those topics and focus areas, and how do we turn these into data-driven SMART goals so we can actually utilize the data that's available to us to write the goals and the objectives appropriately? We will then bring those back to the CSIP team for review and then ultimately bring the results to the Board of Education for approval. So I think it's important for y'all to know what it has looked and felt like. Again, a board member has been at each meeting, I think maybe with the exception of the first one board member, with some alternating between our primary and our alternate. So, the first meeting, and these are the slide decks essentially from the meetings, and so we'll just go quickly so you can have a sense of how the meetings have looked and felt and what the collaborative process was to get us to this point. So we had individuals assigned to groups randomly to ensure we had diverse conversation. We did some warm welcome introductions. Obviously, we were just coming together as a group, so we needed a little bit of norming. We articulated to the group, what is a CSIP? What is their purpose? We explained that that's guided by the MSIP six and that we have to frame our work within what DESI expects and that there are standards and indicators that need to be met by that CSIP. We also talked about the role of the team. We created a timeline, much like the one that I just provided for you. And then, the large portion of the meeting was we divided this room, and it's a full room in here when we're in here, into three rotations. So we were in three large groups, and each group rotated through each station. The idea, again, was familiarizing ourselves with what a CSIP can look like, feel like, and how we wanted to begin our work. So, each group went through each rotation. The first rotation was to sit at a table with, I don't know, maybe twenty, twenty, thirty different school district CSIPS. They reviewed the CSIPS and they came up with features they liked, features that they, you know, smiley face features, sad face features, wonderings, and then which was their favorite and why. They did this individually, then they did it small group, and then we collected and created a large group. The idea being is that we're not only looking at content, we're also looking at the visual impact. How does it communicate? What do we want it to potentially look like? Because that looks very different across CSIPS across the state. The second rotation at that first meeting was for us to take a look at our current CSIP, look at the data, the end-of-the-year data that we have given to you at the end of the year prior. We had the team review the portrait of a graduate, and then we had them each contribute to the following sentence. "After reviewing the CSIP, the data, and the portrait of the grad, I think our CSIP should include." So this was just an opportunity for people to sort of brainstorm initially what they thought at this particular table. And the third rotation involved looking deeply at the MSIP six standards and indicators, the scoring guide that the state will use to score and grade a CSIP, the planning tool that's required to be submitted to the state of Missouri with a CSIP for evaluation for MSIP six, as well as our literacy plan to have a comprehensive understanding of that. And then they drafted three main takeaways. So through the course of that rotation, we talked about not being at the point where things were leaving the meeting at that point. We did a little bit of brown robin. We talked about our thoughts, and we identified the next meeting. So Meeting One was about familiarizing ourselves with process, beginning to look at what it could look like, our data, and how we will be evaluated, and how that all needs to play where it's framing up the scheme for what we're going to build. That brought us to the meeting number two in September, and we again mixed everyone up by asking them to sit with a particular letter that had been assigned to their name. We did quick introductions. We did a quick recap of the meeting. We looked at the board priorities and goals. We talked about equity and the commitment this board had made, and then we talked a little bit about stakeholder involvement. Again, recap. We did spend a good amount of time taking a look at the board priorities and goals that the board had most recently approved because we do think that there should be integration and alignment between what is our school improvement plan and what the board has identified as priorities and goals in some way. We also spent a good amount of time walking through the March 2nd, 2023 Board Work Session. If you recall, that was the work session that we had over at Summit Technology in which Ms. Sanders worked through the decision that you as a board had to make with regard to, do we want a separate equity plan? Or do we want the equity plan to be interwoven throughout the CSIP and the commitment we made at the time to ensure that equity is woven throughout the existing CSIP? So wanted the team to have that framework and understand that we were moving, utilizing that framework. We reviewed the end-product visual. We talked about how the end-current CSIP might look and feel a little different than what we're hoping to make our end-product next. Gave a little bit of a brain break, which was much needed because then what we did was we went back to those MSIP six standards and indicators that we had reviewed at one of the tables at Meeting One, and each small group was given one of the standards and indicators. And then they were given this ginormous packet, which is every single comment that came in from the survey that we did of community stakeholders. So there's thousands of comments here that came in on the survey, right? And they were given this packet, and at their table, they were asked to grab a highlighter and review this packet specifically through the lens of the indicator that their table had been given. What that allowed for them to do is read with purpose. Everybody had a different indicator that they were looking for in the set of comments, and as they were reading the comments, they were looking for that indicator being represented in the comments. So we could begin to categorize these comments against what the state of Missouri has said are the ways CSIP should be evaluated. We then created some aggregate conversation about trends and through-lines that we saw in the comments. And that really took up Meeting Number Two. Then we gave the team some homework. Between Meeting Number Two and Meeting Number Three, the homework, and this is literally just a snip out of the email that they received, was for each individual to please draft or write three strategic goals, and again, those are the big, dark-colored boxes at the top. Three strategic goals that they would personally, individually write if they had the hundred percent decision-making. Like, it's your CSIP, what would your four goals be? If they could wave the magic wand, what would it be? We asked them to be thoughtful to the inputs that they had already seen, to the indicators, the standards, the feedback, the survey results, how we would be scored, the data from our pre-survey, all of the inputs that we had been giving for the first two meetings. And then I gave them, as a point of reference, the four goals in our existing CSIP. This is the level of goal we're talking about. That brought us to CSIP Meeting Three, in which we are going to use those magic wand strategic goals that they wrote. The first thing we did is re-anchor ourselves to the idea of strategic goals, objectives, tactics, and strategies. And then, before we got to writing and reviewing those goals, prior to starting the CSIP process with the team, we had asked all of our significant stakeholders at the district level, IOT, SLT, others, to say, hey, if I tell you, whoa, for sure this has to be in the next CSIP in order for my work to continue, what has to show up? What do we need to see continue? What do you need in your area to show up? And it might show up as a goal. It might show up as an objective. It might show up as a strategy or tactic, but what would you like to see? So I shared with the team what each leader had shared. They were hopeful to see show up in the CSIP to help continue the good work in their departments that they felt were going on. This was not a directive. This was just a brainstormed list by the different areas. And really, I didn't refine them or clean them up at all for them, and I didn't refine the slides at all for this. So this is very much just, we'd like to see, the curriculum department would like to see these things show up in the CSIP, and the assessment team would like to see these things show up, and instructional technology, these things, and career world, real-world learning, these things, and elementary ed, these things. Secondary, equity and student services, special services, student support, professional development, operations, okay? So we worked through, what are your district leaders hoping to see show up in this, right? Because at some point, those things are going to have to sort of come together and reconcile. So we now have all of the inputs that the CSIP team has gone through. We have them having spent some time giving thought to what they would like the big goals to be. We've heard, okay, and our building administrators want to make sure this stuff shows up in here somehow. It's time to start pulling it together. So we put them in groups of four, and we asked each of them to share their own personal goals. So share your homework with your table. And then we asked the tables of four to come to consensus, right? You brought your four. You brought your four. You brought your four. I brought my four. Okay. We need to get to three-to-five as a table. What are they? Right? So we take our individual ones, and we came up with our three-to-five as a table. We put one on each poster paper, right? Goal one, goal two, goal three, four. And then we started to put them on the wall, and groups started to say, well, my poster one is much like your poster two. And we started to group the posters based on topic. And it became pretty evident pretty quickly that we had clusters of posters around things that were eventually going to be the desired goals. So then, what I did was I took the posters and I typed them literally, like, oh, my assistant typed them literally, exactly what was on the poster, right? And we turned that into goals and strategies. I took everything that was on the posters and everything that the administrators had said they'd like to see, and I made these drafts. Okay? I made a draft of, here's what I think these could become. So we came to CSIP Meeting Four, and I said, okay, keep me honest, all right? I made these goals, and I grouped these things based on what I feel was a fair representation of how these posters were grouped. But here is the typed narration, the script of what was on the posters, and here are the goals that I synthesized them into and how I categorized things. Is it a fair reconciliation? Did I do a good enough job? And we spent time talking about, is there anything missing? Is this reflective of what we as a group said? We did that with a couple of groups. And then we said, okay, we're not talking about tactics or strategies or objectives, just the goals, the big colorful boxes. Are these four goals representative to guide an overarching look at the district? And in general, there was consensus that these four goals were solid. There is some ongoing conversation about whether there should be a fifth goal that is specifically targeted at staff support, HR, staff well-being. Right now, those pieces are integrated into these other four goals, so that is sort of a remaining question that is lingering with work to be done. Then I said, okay, given that those four goals are there, let's go step lower. Let's go to tactics and strategies, right? We listed everything the administrators wanted to see. Now, think back to what was in the surveys. Think back to what you want. What do you think is missing from this list? And how do we begin to add it to for consideration? And we spent some time as that as a group. We collected them all. And then, we took everything we had created, and we went back to DESI's evaluation tool. And I said, okay, if what we just came up with had to be graded using DESI's evaluation tool, what kind of grade are we going to get, right? Because we have to continue to monitor ourselves against how we're going to be evaluated. And we spent some time with that. So that brings us to here. The document that was in as a PDF in Board Docs is a draft. It's not a draft of a CSIP. It is a document that has the goals that the team agreed to, for the most part. It has the recommended ideas. These might become SMART goals. These might become tactics. Kind of depends on how they get grouped, right? And there'll be data attached to the objectives. The tactics will support that. Okay? And we're going to take this document, and we're turning it over to a work session that involves all of IOT and all of SLT, and it is a whole-day work session. And the charge of that day is to take what has been given to us by our CSIP stakeholders and to turn these into measurable SMART goals and objectives with tactics and strategies to support them that fairly represent everything that is here and that the CSIP stakeholders have told us they want us to create. Okay? That will then go back to the CSIP team for review, feedback, edits, questions. And that go-back-to-the-team night, I have invited that entire IOT, SLT team to come to the CSIP night so that if there are questions about, hey, where did this one go, or how come this, or how come that, that those of us who have edited those into SMART goals and objectives can be there to help respond to the rationale why things might have been combined or added or so forth. And so that's where we are right now in the process because the idea then is that that feedback and recommendations would come from that CSIP team and the IOT, SLT. We would refine it up and then bring it to you all for approval for those top-two portions and item of information for those tactics and strategies. So, open to questions about process strategy, but also if there is any question or concern or need for us to deviate from our plans, that would be a good time to let us know.
Thank you for that presentation. Board, is there any questions, concerns, as was stated? If there's some stop signs that need to go on right now, let's do it now. Let's go with Board Member Murdoch.
Obviously, I mean, I've been in the majority of the meetings here, except for this last one. So, right, so seeing this come in, the document is a little bit different here. My question would be, is there any benefit to combining Goals Two and Four essentially together? If we're going to create a Goal Five anyway around HR, so a district that essentially fosters responsive, inclusive, caring environment while cultivating meaningful partnerships? I mean, we're essentially talking communication in both things and building relationships in both things, right?
Yeah, I think whether a Five is coming or not is probably still a little up in the air for question, right? But I do think the intent of the team with regard to Two was that the SEL belonging, maybe some of the more overt D-team work and so forth would be represented with Two, whereas Three would be more of the real-world learning, community partnerships, partners in ed, communication, legislative advocacy piece. I mean, there's always valuable ability to combine. I think the one thing we want to make sure is that, you know, less can be more and less can be less too. Like, we want to make sure that whatever the goal is, is very clearly measurable by the objectives, which is very clearable by the tactics. I don't have any objection to combining. That team really saw those as one being more about the well-being and one being more about real-world learning and connections.
Okay, and that's fine. However it shakes out is fine. But to the point that you just made about making sure that we can actually measure things, I do support a Goal Number Five because I do think from an HR retention and recruitment perspective, how we're evaluating continuing to expand and the investment that we made in Grow Your Own, those kinds of things by expanding that program, we're going to be able to have data that would be able to measure that, especially over the long term. So I would highly advocate for us creating that Goal Five, or whatever number it's going to become, centered around our HR, our recruitment, our retention, those kinds of things because I think there's plenty of data to go around. Plus, it's going to have to be a hallmark of, I would anticipate, any school district at this point, of trying to recruit staff in what I would anticipate is going to continue to be a highly competitive area to attract really, really good teachers, teachers and support staff for that matter. So I would really support creating that Goal Number Five and making sure that we have some pieces surrounding that. Thanks.
Vice President Foley.
Thank you. So, something that I didn't see included here that I was just curious about is if there was any conversation about accountability and discipline and behaviors and kind of the safety component, especially in regards to fighting? Because that's something that we've, you know, talked about as a board in looking at how to improve those situations going forward for our students. So is that something that was maybe discussed during the CSIP conversations? And then if so, where would that be reflected here, or is that something that might be added later?
Yep, absolutely. That did come up, and actually, it came up largely at the last meeting in which Student Behaviors was presenting, maybe not specifically to one particular behavior, but safety and well-being. I think where we would see that inserted would be under Strategic Goal Number Two, foster, inclusive, caring, safe environment, right? And really thinking about the idea of potentially adding something, whether that's a tactic or a goal. I mean, we certainly can, I mean, maybe that's the question, like, it would go under Strategic Goal Number Two, so maybe it becomes a tactic or an objective, right? We know it's an identified board goal, so it becomes an objective so that the tactic can be some of the items that are also listed here, some of the SEL work that feeds toward that. But certainly, I will denote the behaviors piece for sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, Dr. Johnson.
Just curious for Goal Number Two, will safe be added to the goal? The word safe.
We can.
Okay. Just since we are talking about discipline and safety, if that could be, so that we don't have, people don't kind of have to infer that that's where it goes. Just a thought.
Yep, we can potentially add safety even into that language.
Any other questions?
I have a question. When looking at the slide where you had the breakdown of the individuals that made up the committees, were there additional individuals? I saw that there was only three community members. Now, of course, we have staff, individuals that are parents and things like that. But was there community members that was not allowed, or did we actually allow everyone to participate that actually applied?
No, I had more applicants than I had available space. And when I say community members, I think it's worth noting, those are community members without children. So the thirty-three parents are not, there's many parents who are not staff members on this list. So what the goal was, was to create a diverse team across these lists that was as heavy outside of administration as it wa, it's much heavier outside of administration actually than it was inside to ensure that all schools were reflected. And I think in general, we've done also a very nice job of creating a generally diverse group of individuals in the room.
So out of the thirty-three parents, are any of those staff?
There is overlap on some of these. I've got a matrix I can send to the board about, essentially what I did is I took the, however many there are, fifty or sixty people, I took that list, and I marked, like, which category do you meet, this, 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 or this, and this? And which schools do you represent, or do you have a connection to? Happy to send the chart. Is there some overlap? Yes. Do I feel like that has skewed this in a way that it's not representative? No, but I can get that to you.
I appreciate that. And yeah, ultimately, what my goal is, I want to see how many individuals are not staff that participated in this process.
Yep, I can get to you in not-staff list. And again, you know, we can get that count, but perhaps, Mr. Murdoch, or Ms., I mean, I don't know if the room feels heavy staff when we're having the conversation, but again, I have the perspective that I have, but I'll get you the list for sure.
And again, I think staff perspective is great. I just want to make sure, obviously with this board, we have had those conversations where we felt like it was not a widespread of individuals, and so that's the reason why I'm asking that question. Vice President, Board Member Eslic.
I swear it's every time. I don't really have a question, but I agree with that statement. The feedback, is there a way for the board to have that feedback, be able to look at it? I don't know if anybody else would be interested in that, but the survey that went out, I'm just definitely very curious what that looked like, so.
Yep, I will be able to provide. It's actually both CSIP and, it's the whole survey. It came as one PDF. We can get that to you. I will tell you that what was provided to the group did have some hand-redaction on it. If it was specific to an individual's name or to other concerns, I would presume we'll just give you the unredacted version, but understanding that that we made every effort that we could to protect dignity in that process while honoring the surveys as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other dialogue or conversation?
Can I just make sure I have two deliverables? One, CSIP membership matrix. Two, CSIP CFMP survey results. Correct?
And then also, we want to make sure that we see the data, the breakdown.
Yeah, that's the step matrix. That's the first.
And then we want to make sure that we're adding safety to Goal Number Two.
Yeah, and that'll be through the committee because she'll want to do a rinse cycle and give the committee a chance to say, yes, we agree, or push back one way or the other. But I think that would be a committee work, but deliverables will get these two things to you as a board.
And then also, I don't want to forget.
Yeah, that was actually just for clarification. When I was saying Goal Five, that would be coming up in the next meeting anyway.
Yeah, we will be talking, yeah, we'll be talking about a Goal Four or a Goal Five or not, and safety or not. I mean, ultimately, that recommendation will come through the team, but the intention of being here today is to ensure that we bring a product that the board is comfortable with us bringing in the end.
And then the survey results. Okay, perfect. Anything else? All right.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dr. Berger.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our second item on the agenda, which is 2.02, Board Policy CBC, DD, and also IGBB. Dr. Carlson, thank you, sir.
Thank you, and these items have been through Board Policy Committee, revisions processed through, and then to SLT. And now they start their journey to becoming board-adopted through the work-session step here. So happy to answer any questions.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open this up. Obviously, we know that we have already kind of looked at these, but if there's any questions or concern, I know that Board Member Eslic and myself serve on policy, but, I mean, we've seen all of these. But if there's any questions for us or Dr. Carlson, we'll be happy to answer those questions. Any comments or questions? Okay, Mr. Murdoch.
I have one. Specific to DD on grants. One, how many federal grants do we actually have going right now? Do you know, federal grants? Because the reason I'm asking, so just to encapsulate the whole question here, fifteen thousand or more, fine, whatever, right, as a number. But typically, a federal grant requires a lot more reporting and paperwork and whatnot in terms of the details. So typically, they are awarded in much larger chunks, right? So I'm just curious how many federal grants we have going and how many this would actually apply to in terms of a competitive grant that now all of a sudden, if we're doing the fifteen thousand or more.
If I can try and take a stab for you there. So I used to be a federal programs coordinator. So did Dr. Berger there. So you got Title I, Title II. You have just a few. I think what you're seeing here is adding that fifteen thousand or more because technically, our peak grants are grants, and our current board policy said you should approve every single peak grant. So we're trying to say, well, that's impractical. Let's try to put a fifteen thousand on.
Which is actually, was my follow-up question, which is, should the board just be approving federal grants?
That was the original language.
I don't think it actually said, the original language wasn't towards.
That's up to you. As a board, you can say federal grants. For example, we have a Kaufman grant for two hundred seventy thousand dollars. Do you want to have that come to the board? Or do you just want it to be just federal grants? We could do either one.
The, the reason I want the discussion more than anything right now is that typically speaking, when the grants come through the cycle of the employees applying for them, the board has little, little to do, if anything, to be perfectly honest, anything to do with understanding what A is within the grant and B, what the application process was in terms of the wardens and dates that, that they're actually going to get awarded anyway. Outside of what is a relatively cyclical, cyclical thing of federal grant awards that come on an annual basis, that have annual typical deadline dates, those kinds of things that are better tailored to oversight from a board level perspective. That's why I'm just curious in terms of, of those kinds of things, if that's where our purview really should be, rather than looking at these, getting into the weeds on some of the grants that we probably don't even know existed until all of a sudden they would come before the board.
So I, I think the intent and the reason, if you look at the way the policy was worded, right? I mean, all, right? So I, I think the intent was to not have grants that are a two hundred fifty dollar conservation grant to go fishing, right? Or, or the myriad of grants that we have that are under the fifteen thousand dollar threshold. I think the word competitive is important because, you know, a Title I grant, Part B, federal grants that we got, those, we have to apply for them, but they're automatic if we apply for them, right? There, there's no competitive aspect. And, and I think the, you know, now fifteen thousand, where that's at, could it be a higher or lower threshold? But I do think, you know, there are grants in, in, you know, at least my experience here, that are a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars. They may have a federal source, but it may not be, it may come through DESI, but it is a federal source. It may not be, you know, it may be a local like Kaufman. I think the intent that we were trying to go for is, you know, the board probably should be aware of those grants. And it also, I think, will help us as a district to be very intentional about what is this grant for? How will we use it? But most importantly, in my world at least, is how will we sustain it? Or do we need to sustain it after the grant period is, is finished? And so I, I just, that's, I think, the landscape of, in the fifteen thousand, the reason for that amount is that's where our contract amount is. Contract amounts over fifteen thousand go for the board. There's not necessarily a magic to that number, other than it aligns with our current standard for contracts.
And I, I appreciate that answer because I hadn't really thought about it from the competitive aspect of it. That, that is helpful in that regard. I just, I can't envision very many scenarios where a grant comes before us that we've been awarded and the seven of us, seven of us go, no, we don't want it. There might be some, there might be some, there might be, but it, it would be, I would anticipate, pretty rare. So I was just wanting to just, just to kind of think it through. But that makes sense on the competitive thing, thanks.
I'll, I'll add, President, or Board Member Murdock, that in a previous district, it was, if it was matching funds, board had to approve. There used to be a lot of matching fund grants, like we'd pay fifty percent and the grant paid fifty percent. We're seeing a lot less of those right now, but I've seen a, a board policy say that as well. Instead of being this competitive and fifteen thousand dollar market, it'd be more of if there's matching funds, board has, has to approve. There's no right or wrong way, but we're trying to make sure that A, we're compliant with the board policy, which right now technically we're not with the Education Foundation. If they give a fifty dollar grant to a classroom, our current policy would say, actually, you guys should approve that. And I don't think that's the right policy to have. So we do need to redo this. Where it lands, I think, is a great discussion to have.
Board Member Eslic.
I definitely appreciate your comments, Board Member Murdock. And I really appreciate the clarification about the competitive piece of it. The only thing that I'll say, I can, I understand the concern of getting down to like the minutia and the weeds. So I think the only thing that I would say on why the board would maybe want it, would at least just be aware, which I think is really what this policy is more about, is just making the board aware of what types of money we're seeing come in. And again, we go back to the financial sustainability. But also, I would just maybe highlight, who is the district doing business with? Being aware that we are receiving money from a certain institution or whatever, just so that the board has an awareness that we have this relationship with whatever organization we are receiving grants from. So I think that's good information as a board member, and we can obviously discuss what that threshold is. But I also think it fifteen thousand makes sense because we're already in that, in that space when we're talking about other contracts, so. But just wanted to kind of add that to the conversation. Thanks.
All right, anything else? All right. I believe that concludes our work session. Thank you.